There you go.
Here we go. Okay. Before I call this meeting to order, we had an executive session from 6:30 to 7:00 on labor. And at this point, I will call the meeting to order and we will have a roll call. Please.
Mrs. Brancato.
Here.
Mrs. Crossen.
Here.
Mrs. Islandberg.
Here.
Mr. Gendhart.
Here.
Mr. Godikson.
Present.
Mr. Lyden.
Here.
Mrs. Lynch.
Present.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
And Mr. Sadowski.
Here.
Nine members present.
Thank you. Before we rise to say the Pledge of Allegiance, would you please remain standing and say a prayer of your choice for the hostages that are being held in a foreign country? Thank you. Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. That was America.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. The next item on the agenda is announcements, and I would feel compelled at this point in time to say that we have received a petition for school tax relief for senior citizen homeowners filled out by residents. We just received it tonight, and I think we would have to check into all this. And truthfully speaking, as you all know, that would be the avenue of a state representative, not the school, but whoever did all this and gathered all these names, thank you very much. And being a senior, thank you even more. Next item on the agenda is William Tenet High School. Ms. Hendricks, please.
Hi. So I'm speaking for student government. Is it not? Oh, I'm sorry. Where am I pressing? I just have to speak. My bad. Okay, so the first thing is the National Art Honor Society induction was today. November 15th and 16th are the interview days for the Pathways course for the fall semester. November 15th is the Powderpuff Game at 7:00 PM in the stadium, and the pep rally will be held at the end of the school day at the stadium. Over 250 juniors and seniors are participating this year. All proceeds from ticket sales will go to Kisses for Kyle, an organization that supports local families who have children battling cancer. The seniors this year are senior spies, and the cheer coaches are Alex Rochford, Ino Archvadze, Lacey Powell, Krista Bondarenko, Asaya Davis, Courtney Fox, and me, Olivia Heinrichs. Football coaches for the seniors are Connor Berry, Spencer Rakuski, Liam Gibson, CJ Mazzarella, Troy Mangan, Christy Ambra, and Jack Mahalan. And our managers are Giovanna Grassi, Alyssa Chesney, and Summer Ruth. The juniors are the junior jesters, and their cheer coaches are Julie Conway, Jackie Frake, Brylin Benner, Jordan Hahn, Braylon Lockett, Savannah Yancy, and Lillian Hall. And their football coaches are Sean Haslett, Justin Frederick, Nick Taylor, Danny Fox, A.J. Alwyn, and Joey Hebling, and their manager is Sophia Rajan. Miss Panther nominations will be done between now and Thanksgiving break. Our fall break is from November 22nd to the 24th. The senior class photo is November 28th. December 2nd, Tenet is hosting the winter SAT, and on December 2nd, it is also FBLA's Breakfast with Santa, and the snow date for that is December 9th. December 5th until the 15th, Tenet is holding the winter wave of the Keystone exams, and then the last thing before the next school board meeting is on December 12th, which is the FBLA Regional Leadership Competition.
Very good. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
MBIT student, Mr. Isaac, please.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Xavier Isaac, and I'm a senior at William Tenet High School. I'm also a Level 300 student in the Building Trades Occupations Program at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology. Current happenings, MBIT is hosting an annual open house for middle school and high school students on Wednesday, December 6th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There will be two informational sessions for potential students and parents, one at 6:00 PM and the second at 7:00 PM. You can also explore our campus and programs with an interactive map. Prospective students are invited to sign up to shadow a program where they can spend half a day in a program that is interesting to them. Students will be able to apply for the 2024-2025 school year that evening. Visit www.mbit.org for more information on the open house event. We hope to see you there. Thirty-six MBIT students will have the opportunity to travel to Pennsylvania's District 2 Skills USA Fall Leadership Conference, held at the Kalahari Resort in the Poconos. Students will be able to participate in leadership-building skills, teamwork, and problem-solving. The conference encourages district unity and school spirit. It's that time of the year again. The automotive technology and collision repair technologies programs, students will be raising money for the month of November to help the auto dealers' Caring for Kids Foundation drive away the cold by purchasing coats for underprivileged kids in the Delaware Valley. Congratulations to Cecilia Lucanese, a student at Central Bucks West and a Level 300 student in the Cosmetology Program. She was awarded Makeup Artist of the Year after working at Valley of Fear doing their makeup. The Labor and Industry approved five trades pre-apprenticeship programs for Bucks County Career and Technical Center students. On Tuesday, November 28th, the Bucks County Pre-Aprenticeship Program will be holding information sessions. For more information about these sessions, please visit our website. Follow us on social media to learn more about the latest happenings at MBIT by liking us on Facebook, following us on Instagram, TikTok, Twitter, and viewing our videos on YouTube. Thank you for your time and the opportunity to keep you informed about what is happening at Middle Bucks Institute of Technology.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you so much. Next item on the agenda is the superintendent's report. The superintendent is right here. Do you want to give your report, or should I go to Mr. Greenwood?
Mr. Greenwood is a part of...
It's your choice.
Yeah, Mr. Greenwood, and then I had Mr. Rutz prepare to go ahead and fill in, so we can go ahead and proceed with those people.
Well, thank you for that. Mr. Greenwood, please. That was a good entrance.
Nate, can you bring up the other slide under the superintendent's report? The budget calendar. There we go. Thank you. We are sharing a draft of the 24-25 budget calendar, and we'll be looking for the board to adopt this calendar at our next committee of the whole meeting on November 28th. Due to the presidential election, presidential primaries in '24, the calendar timeline is accelerated by a month, particularly on the front end. So there's things that we will be needing to address quickly into the end of this calendar year. Is it coming back? Dr. Benton?
He's trying to make it bigger.
Okay. Namely, the opt-out resolution, right? So the opt-out resolution is typically something that we take care of in January. That will need to be done in December of this year in order to make the timeline fit. So the opt-out resolution, if you recall, is sort of a statement that the district will not exceed the Act One index in its budget planning. The Act One index for '24-25 is 5.3%. We also included two, we included two work sessions on January 23rd and then again on February 27th with an alternate date in March. So if the board chooses to have a month off in between there, we can either go month-to-month, January, February with a work session, or we can, we can take the February one out and insert the March date in there so that we keep an even pace through that process. I think that was all we were looking to cover.
So we're wanting to get this out in front to make you aware. We ask that you take a look at it, as well as we will share this with those incoming members, because I think at the next meeting, we need to know that we're going to do this calendar or make some changes to it. The only other thing that will happen also with this, the calendar, once a new board is seated, is, you know, there's a shift with elections date. So we have to address that too, once a new board is seating, about the shift in the, in the April, what was that, they're shifting it to, Tom?
It's the April 23rd date is the one in question.
Yeah, and they're, they're posing the question to shift it, but right now, it's this, we have a board meeting scheduled for that same day, thinking that if they change it, then we can still have our board meeting.
So, so that will be something coming down the pipeline too. All right?
All right, that's good. Thank you.
Mr. Rutz? If I'm here, I'll let you still be me. Yes, go ahead. Nate, can you bring up the superintendent's report?
Strange things are happening tonight. This is exciting. I can't wait.
It's like teacher wait time.
Get you ready. There we go. It's coming. There we go. All right. We are live. Good evening, everybody. Happy November. I think we use this. On behalf of the Office of Teaching and Learning, Mr. Rutz and I are here tonight to share some exciting news. As Dr. Benton had shared, I think with you all earlier, and we shared a preview of some of the state data that had come out earlier this fall, we now have the official report out on the PA Future Ready Index, so the data is quote-unquote finalized and ready to be shared with the public. As we've been talking about for the past four to five years, we've been making a lot of changes and updates around our curriculum, getting ourselves aligned, our instructional practices, our assessments, and then changing up some of our systems in order to improve student outcomes. You remember, over the past few years, some of those systems changes included, again, getting our curriculum aligned, changing the district academic calendar, getting earlier in the year to get more days in prior to the state testing, having a renewed focus on professional learning around teaching and learning, and then also changing up some systems, changing up some of our report cards, working on school schedules. We've also shared with the board, over time, that to start to get to improved achievement, we have to back all the way up to those foundational systems, the curriculum, the instruction, and the systems, that then led to us sharing a lot of our local data, our iReady data and our iXL data, which again has shown growth. And I know, I think Mr. Godikson specifically had asked, well, when are we going to see, what about the state data? Right? When are we going to see some of this outcome on the state data? And so with this fall's release of P-VAS, I'm not going to steal Mr. Rutz's thunder, but we do have a lot of positives to share in terms of our growth data on the state assessments. So the past two or three years, we've shared of local assessments showing great growth in our students as an outcome of the work we've been doing. We're now seeing some of that growth translate into our state, our state P-VAS growth data. The achievement data, which I'll speak to a little bit later, isn't quite there yet. However, I can point out, there's a few silver linings within the achievement data that we'll, we'll share a little bit later in the presentation. There's a lot more on the slide deck that we're going to go through. We're not going to go through every slide, Mr. Martin, so I'm going to kind of skip around a bit and just hit a couple highlights. So I want to jump right to the Strategies and Goals slide. As you know, as part of the process, when Dr. Benton first got here, he worked with Cabinet and the administrative team and brought to the board a revision of our SMART goals as a district. Two of our top goals are to have our schools annually meet or exceed all the statewide averages or growth expectations outlined in the PA Future Ready Index, and that's the P-VAS growth data that Mr. Rutz will be sharing. And then by 2033, have all schools either exceed PA stated goals outlined in the Future Ready Index. That's more the achievement data. And as I said, we're not there yet, but there are some silver linings we can share about, outpacing the state averages a little bit later in the presentation for that. So, not getting into the history too much, but we did have to make changes. If you remember, we spent time going through a lack of alignment, some years of turnover, and different things that posed a challenge for us and our students in terms of getting up to date with the current standards and having them think and work in a way that's necessary for today's success. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Rutz at this point. And again, we talked about this, and we've been talking about this from these four buckets, as I mentioned earlier, curriculum, instruction, assessment, and systems. So I'll let him share some of the, some of the growth data with you all.
Thank you, Anthony. Good evening, everybody. I know we've shared this graphic before. We take it to heart, curriculum instruction, assessment, and systems using process, systems thinking for student improvement. Again, as Mr. Gabriel said, I'm not going to read every slide too, just want to highlight just some of the steps we've taken since 2019, 2020. Few things we've talked about a lot in this room, work around the science of reading, aligning our curriculum to state standards, bringing springboard ELA for 610, CPM math for 612, also bringing in human capital, coaches, coordinators, specialists, which all makes a difference. Eureka math is another curriculum that is aligned to state standards. Two items I did want to point out on the slide, a couple bullets up from the red one, creating stability in our central office and instructional leadership team, and we see the results of that, having the heart of the team, the same team together for a number of years now. And what we highlighted in red is, again, just want to keep hitting this theme of creating alignment among our curriculum instruction assessments and systems, having everything aligned, growing in the same direction. More steps that we've taken to move forward with our ALD program, MTSS, SEAL, CVLA, and again, in red, just want to highlight the data-driven decision-making. We can't forget about all of the platforms, the assessment systems that we've brought in, Lexia, WIDA, ESGI, Dibbles, Panorama, The Warehouse, iXL, iReady, and our reliance on P-VAS, which we're going to talk about a little bit tonight. Just want to, again, what Mr. Gabriel said, just to kind of pause, just pause a little bit and to celebrate some of the progress that we are making, especially with our student growth. While we're not there yet, in every area with achievement, the growth is very positive. I want to take a minute just to remind everybody about P-VAS, Pennsylvania Value Added Assessment System. The focus of this is growth, really measuring. It's, it's an analytical tool, it's an algorithm that really measures where students are growing. It takes their history of state testing and PSAs and Keystones, and can project out what a student's growth should be and compare that to where a student's growth is at the end of a school year. Your left, just one of our goals, again, to reiterate, our district goals is to annually meet or exceed all of the statewide averages for growth expectations outlined in the Future Ready Index, which pulls from, from P-VAS. I would be remiss if I didn't mention this. This is directly from PDE. They've put a kind of a disclaimer on their Future Ready and P-VAS sites. I don't want to get into the weeds with this, but in essence, it's a caution, it's a precautionary note from PDE about how we review and view the data because of coming out of the pandemic. Testing was waived in 2019, 2020. Students, a good number of students across the Commonwealth still receives waivers to remove themselves, exclude themselves from testing since then. So, last line on the slide here is really important to point out, just that the waiver will impact numbers for reporting through at least 2024. And again, that's straight from PDE. There's, again, some more notes in here about the, the participation rate for a lot of districts across the Commonwealth fell below 95% threshold. So that has had an effect and will continue to have an effect on the reporting out of growth and especially achievement scores from the state. We get asked this a lot, what is the difference between achievement and growth? Again, don't want to read the chart at you. Two things just to point out, two major differences between achievement and growth. Look at the second point down. Achievement is correlated to a lot of demographic factors, socioeconomic status, zip code, et cetera. Growth is not. There's little correlation to demographics, because growth is comparing the student to the student. And if you go down a couple more bullets there, achievement is measuring a student's performance at a single point in time, where again, what P-VAS reports out, the tools that they use to measure, is a student's progress across time and years. Students starting with a PSSA in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, once the student gets three years under their belt of PSSA data, state data, then the state can start projecting out where that child's growth should be. As a teacher, we used to, we used to talk about, think about it this way, achievement is location. Achievement is location. Growth is direction. Achievement is a point in time, growth is the direction academically that the student is moving. Just want to share this color code legend, visual learner myself. Any indicator that is in blue is the state showing that our P-VAS data exceeded the growth expectation, the standard. If it's green, it means it's met. We've met the growth expectation, and red means that we did not yet meet their growth expectation in that area. We're going to move alphabetically through elementary, and then secondary, and then to the high school. What you'll see, looking at the slide from left to right, this will stay constant in these slides, the reporting out. English Language Arts to your left, the middle column is math, the right is science. For Davis Elementary, you can see that we've met the growth standard in ELA, and we're in the dark blue for both math and science for growth for Davis. McDonald, again, moving left to right, English Language Arts, math in the middle, science to the right, so we've exceeded, met, and met for McDonald, excuse me. Willowdale is exceeding across the board in all three testable subject areas from the state. Klinger also is showing, exceeding the growth standard for ELA, for math, and for science. And lastly is the high school. Again, we use data to shine a spotlight or a flashlight on where we are. We've been, the Office of Teaching and Learning has been collaborating with the high school, digging a little bit deeper into ELA and the science scores to see where we are with that. I'm very glad to see math, which statewide is usually trending in the wrong direction. High school moves from red last year into the green, meeting growth this year. So we're very happy about that. So I think that's something to celebrate. To go back to those, there was a lot of exceeding and a lot of meeting. And again, as Mr. Rutz pointed out with the high school, they came with a plan. We met on a couple different occasions. Dr. Benton met with the administration. They have a great plan in place to help address the two areas that are not showing the, meeting the growth needs right, right there. So let's talk about achievement for a second. As we mentioned, before we can get to our achievement growing, we've got to see our growth, right? We just shared that we have a lot of positive growth. We have a lot of meeting the growth standard and exceeding throughout all of the schools. And that goes all the way back to what's been put in place since about 2019, 2020. Align curriculum, assessments that are aligned, focused professional development, schedules, calendars, MTSS, our win periods, all these different structures are being put in place in order to help student outcomes. So in terms of achievement, colors mean relatively the same thing. The achievement measure measures the number of proficient or advanced students in the particular area. Blue means all student groups met the 2033 statewide goal. Green means they met the interim goal or improvement target, and red means they did not meet the interim goal or target. So we were only going to show one school today, which is Davis, just to kind of explain how this reads, and then anybody can go to the Future Ready site, access all of this data, and I'll explain the silver lining in a second. So from a growth standpoint, which has to come before achievement, right, we're seeing a lot of green and blue. The achievement's not there yet. I'll talk about the silver lining in a second. So this example with Davis, you can see that from an achievement standpoint, English Language Arts and math are not quite there yet in terms of meeting the targets, but science is. So that's a positive. They're actually exceeding, or all, all subgroups are meeting that, that outcome. The silver lining is, if you look across all six schools and the three measures in each of the six schools, we have 56% of those areas beating the statewide average. So while we're not there yet in terms of our achievement and what the goals are for 2033, we are over 50% of our schools, 56% of our schools, 56% of the 18 areas across the six schools, we are outperforming the statewide average. So that's the silver lining with the achievement. And again, to get to the achievement showing what we're looking for, we've got to get the growth first. And as Mr. Rutz mentioned, this is really the first year, if you go back through some of these slides, that most, all of our schools are showing really strong growth on PSAs and on the statewide tests. Again, we had the local data over the past two years at least to show this, and it was nice to see this year that that was starting to influence, and that outcome was, was making its way into the, into the statewide data, which was, I know, a question that had been asked on multiple occasions. So we are, we're getting there. Not there yet, clearly. We've got some areas to work on in the high school, which we talked about. We'll use the, the data to inform our plan, inform the high school's plan, and provide the supports they need, as well as obviously getting all of our schools, because most of our schools, from an achievement standpoint, at this, were in the red, just to be quite transparent, from an overall achievement standpoint, meeting the 2033 goal. But we've been outperforming statewide average in, in over 50% of those. So again, just, the purpose of this was to celebrate progress. It's not the end destination yet. We're not there yet. We still have a lot more to do in terms of continuing to implement some of the newer programs like Wisdom, continuing to refine our systems, like our win time at the middles and the elementary schools and sorts, those sorts of initiatives. But I thought it would be a nice way to start to celebrate our progress as part of this journey for us and for the district, the teachers and the students. Questions?
So Madam Chair, that was, as we promised when I gave the board a preliminary review in October, when the officials' votes were out, as you can see, they held true, and we are proud. It's been a lot of work, but you don't fix 12 years of unalignment and other things overnight, and also during the midst of a pandemic. So I would say that I am ecstatic that, as he said, you know, even when we're not hitting the state goal, 56% of the targets were beating the state average. And on our growth, it was at 89% of the targets being met. And that's all coming out of the pandemic, as well as, as you know, that our demographic shift has been significant in our district. We're now 50, 51% free reduced lunch. The last look, we now up to 50 countries and close to probably 40 languages spoken in our district, and we're still meeting the needs of a growing diverse population, which is why P-VAS is so much more important. It minimizes the, the evaluation related to socioeconomic status, because it's about the kid growing and progressing through that year based on their own data set that's measuring their growth.
Wonderful.
And I would tell you that our building scores just came back, and we're ecstatic with some of the results of the overall building scores that the state just released that are outpacing this year a number of the surrounding school districts.
Well, thank you. Gentlemen, thank you very, very much. Very interesting, and I hope people in this room are encouraged by the good results we are having. Once again, gentlemen, thank you.
All right.
Well, if you look at our agenda, if anyone in this room is following the agenda, and I know you all are, there was an item of William Tannen alumni who's going to make a donation to William Tannen tonight. I received a phone call from Ms. Boyle at 6:30, I think it was.
That's when I got the call, yes.
I know. That's been postponed. This will happen on the next school board meeting, which will be November 28th. So just for clarity, thank you for the phone call, thank you for the heads up. So we'll get the money in the, the end of the month.
Oh, you got the money already.
Okay. You just wanted to show us that check.
Yeah, they like to be.
That wasn't done yet.
Yes.
Well, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Ms. Crossen, please.
Be it resolved, that's the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the November 14th, 2023 board agenda as per the attached. Are there any corrections that need to be made that are allowed by PA law? Can I get a second? Okay, on favor.
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, thank you. If anyone would like to speak before the board, we have green cards, if you please fill them out, we'd be happy to hear your thoughts. We have a few tonight, and first what we have is Ms. Schleck, I might have pronounced your name wrong, and I totally apologize for that, but if you just give us your name and your address, thank you.
Sure. My name is Katie Shank.
I didn't say it wrong. Uh-oh.
It's all right. Ladies and gentlemen of the school board, good evening. My name is Katie Shank, I live in Warminster Township. I stand before you today as a concerned parent. It has come to my attention that my daughter's image was used on a recent mailer. The mailer was distributed on behalf of some of our current school board directors without my consent. As a parent and a professional photographer myself, respecting the privacy of families who choose not to have their children's photos made public is something that I hold dear. I take image usage and the protection of our children's rights very seriously. In this instance, I'm deeply troubled that the unauthorized use of my daughter's image occurred, particularly as she is on the school's do not photograph list. Tonight, I urge this esteemed board to review and take immediate action regarding several key policies, two, 904 and 911. They outline guidelines for image usage within our district, the authority and power of school board members, and Pennsylvania statute 8316, which specifically addresses unauthorized commercial use of an individual's likeness and name. Policy two sets the standard for board members to remember that at all times as individuals, they have no authority outside the meetings regarding media and communications. Meanwhile, policy 911, under news media relations, outlines the authorization process for submitting photographs to news media and emphasizes the necessity of obtaining consent for such use. Additionally, the Pennsylvania statute 8316 is crucial in this matter, as it delineates the legal framework concerning the commercial use of an individual's name or likeness without consent. I respectfully request that this board thoroughly investigates these violations, holds those responsible accountable, and takes immediate steps to ensure such unauthorized use does not happen again. Parents entrust the district to safeguard our children's privacy and rights, and we need to uphold those same standards. I implore the board to take decisive action in addressing these breaches and to reinforce our commitment to protecting the privacy and rights of our students. Thank you for your attention and consideration of this matter. I trust that this esteemed board will take the necessary steps to rectify these violations and maintain the integrity of our district policies. Thank you.
Thank you for all the interesting facts that you've put together.
It's not facts, you guys approved these, these policies.
I'm complimenting all your due diligence, that's what I'm doing.
No problem. If you need any verification, I have copies of all of them printed out.
I totally believe you.
Happy to speak with you after the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This subject, we have received numerous emails and phone calls. There have been threats of lawsuits, which somewhat changes the dynamics. If anyone on this board would like to address this, fine, if they don't want to, since this is a, might become a legal action, it makes it more difficult to actually talk about it. But input from the residents is always, always welcome. Anyone else fill out a green card, you'd like to talk on this subject? Well, then, thank you, and once again, thank you for your due diligence. Next person to put in a card was Mr. Eddy.
Mrs. Lynch, hold on a second. I'm sorry. So I would, I would like to address the mailers.
Okay.
I'm not going to call out the people's names who did it because they know who they are. Um, I'm sorry, you did do a good homework because that is exactly what those things say. Maybe the people that used the likeness, used the photographs, didn't look at those policies, and for that, I'm sorry, even though I'm not the one who did it. It is never okay to use somebody else's, somebody, other child's picture, no matter what. And maybe sometimes people don't realize that, because we don't know an individual student's situation. Like, I had one phone call, and I did ask them to call Mrs. Lynch, whether they did or didn't, I do not know.
They did.
I didn't even tell you what the student, what the situation was, that would you know?
I knew what it was because they told, they mentioned your name.
Oh, well, there's a custody situation with one, where an abuser is not supposed to know where the student is, and that child's face is front and center. I did tell that parent to call you and to do what they have to do. The people that did it, again, I'm not going to say their names because they know who they are. An apology goes a long way, and if people don't want to do that, that's on them. But I do apologize for what somebody else did, especially to the lady who is upset because now her abuser can find out where her child is. They had no idea before. So I'm sure you're saying you spoke to them, so I'm going to leave it at that.
Ms. McCrea, of course, I spoke to a lot of people, and they were directed to me, and I was happy to try to speak on it. So, does that conclude your remarks?
There's nothing else for me to say. I mean, I, I've said I'm sorry, even though I didn't do it. I've said it's wrong, even though I didn't do it. I'm not asking somebody else to speak up if they don't feel comfortable, but it needed to be, it needed to be, someone, one of us has to say something besides, I understand you did, because people are mad. And I'm going to tell you, if that was my kid's picture on there, I would be mad too, especially if I was the mom who, I mean, I take pictures at things, not of myself, and I don't take pictures of students, ever. If, if, if one of us shares something from the school district Facebook page, that's different, because that's the school district sharing it. The, the school district took the picture, they have the authorization to do that, but none of us should be doing that. So I'll just leave it there.
Thank you. Mr. Eddy. Sir, you were the one who did the petition?
Yes, actually, Kabor Eddy is the official petitioner, if I want to make the presentation.
Okay, would you please go up to the microphone? Thank you.
My name is Kent Hall, from, I live in Warminster, and we, Ms. Eddy and I and many other senior homeowners have been working on a petition for school tax relief for senior citizen homeowners and that reside in, in the district. We're frustrated and angry with continually being forced to pay an ever-increasing school tax when we receive no tangible benefit from doing so, as most of us are well past the age of having any children in school. As you know, many of us homeowners are on fixed incomes, and we have many other federal, state, local taxes to pay, real estate tax, including the, the school tax, school tax, which increases every year, while our means of support do not increase every year. This is a significant burden to, to us seniors. I mean, we're struggling, struggling to cope with the, the rising costs of food, healthcare, and all other essential services, as well as not being able to pay our mortgages and possibly losing our homes. And we understand the primary concerns of the Centennial School Board is the welfare of our children and our community. However, it doesn't seem like the well-being of the senior homeowners community is being considered. And it's not that we don't want to pay school taxes, but the out-of-control annual increases in school taxes are both unfair and inequitable to the senior homeowners, and something has to be done to provide us some relief. So therefore, and I guess you have copies of the petition with some of the signatures on it that people have committed. We, the senior homeowners hereby respectfully petition the school board that our annual school tax obligation be reduced and permanently capped at an average, excuse me, at an annual percentage amount of 50% of whatever the applicable school district tax assessment methodology calculates for each individual senior homeowner each year. And we believe this 50% reduction per year is a fair and reasonable compromise solution to this untenable situation that we senior homeowners face. We'd still be paying a fair share of, of school tax, but not the exorbitant amounts that we're now paying that are, and that are causing us to exist in financial jeopardy and insecurity. So I thank you for considering your petition request.
And thank you for your presentation. I do think honestly, state representatives you should be contacting, I have noticed frequently that they have placed bills in Harrisburg to try to accomplish this goal, and trust me, I'm with you, believe me. But the thing with it is, it really has to come from a state. So you have, I'm not sure if you live in Warminster.
Yes.
Yes, okay, excuse me. And there's a representative Monroe in Warminster, and Mr. Martin, representative in South Yipton.
Well, Senator Farrey represents both.
Okay.
And Kristin Marcel is a representative.
So, thank you. And if you could, you've done a lot, excuse me, you've done a lot of work, could you try to place a telephone call to these gentlemen?
Yes.
That's where, that's where the guts of it is.
Okay.
And thank you for your time, and thank you on behalf of all the senior citizens for trying to achieve this goal.
Okay.
Thank you for listening. I'll thank you.
Mr. Oll, if you stay around, I'd like to discuss that with you at the end of the meeting, rather take up the time now. I have some familiarity with that from the county level where I was for many years.
Mrs. Lynch?
Yes.
Can I speak?
Sure. Ms. Eddy, I, I did speak to Frank Farrey, and I did tell him your concerns. You did call him and you didn't get a call back, so he, sometimes messages get lost in the shuffle. I'll call him tomorrow, and I will scan these and send them to him, because, because any senior citizen that walks the streets and gets this many signatures needs to have a conversation. Like, you did a great job. But he, he did tell me that there is something in the works.
Yeah, there is.
And, excuse me?
Yes.
Yes. He said there was something in the works, and I think I had told you about that, and that sounds like a, a great idea to stop the nonsense, but I will call him tomorrow for you. You're welcome. I'll call you and let you know what happens. You're welcome.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dodson?
Well, I literally just wanted to mention that Frank Farrey, Senator Farrey, has a bill that he's working on that would freeze the senior citizens' taxes at their current level, but it is only at Frank Farrey's area right now, so it needs to go through the House as well.
Well, we have to commend him for making the effort.
Ms. Lynch, if I, if I might, the simpler way to do it that has been proposed, because in all honesty, not every senior citizen is incapable of paying their taxes. The fairer way is to base the taxes not on your property as it is now, which is a totally, in the 21st century, a totally ridiculous way to be fair to people's taxes. It's to base it on your income, regardless of how old you are. That's a much fairer way to do it, and that's where I think there's some movement in Harrisburg, but it hasn't gotten over the finish line. That's what you want to petition them about when you call, is to base it on income, not property.
Well, thank you for coming, and then you had suggestions from our board members, so at least at this level, there's a lot of thought on it. So once again, thank you so much. The next person who would like to speak before the board is Pat Boyle, Ms. Boyle, please.
Pat Merton's Boyle, class of 75, Secretary of William Tannen Alumni Association. I want to thank everyone here, from Dr. Bettin on down, the administration, the teachers, the students. Veterans Day ceremony was held on Friday at William Tannen High School, and let me tell you, I get chills just thinking about it. It was an incredibly beautiful ceremony. The kids and the choir sang, we had two trumpeters play tap, the students, they got up and read about different people who had done different things throughout their lives in the military, who read off the names of the different veterans that were there, that were added to the wall. Forty-three new veterans were added this year, and it just makes you feel so glad that you can say thank you to them, and it was great. And our guest speaker, Robert Miller, class of 65, was so funny. He was just a, he was a character, he was wonderful, but he brought you through his life in the military and discussed PSTD in a way that made it very relatable to all of us. And I just thank you again so much for sponsoring the Veterans Day, for being, allowing us to have the Veterans Day ceremony there, for allowing us to continue the Veterans Wall of Honor. And we gave a thank you to all of our veterans, except for one snuck out and didn't get his little thank you gift. So Dr. Bettin, I have your thank you gift here for your service to our country. Thank you.
I'm sorry they didn't tell you, I had to sneak out and get to the other schools program also. Thank you.
Ms. Boyle, as the wife of the Korean War veteran, my husband, anytime anyone honors the veterans, it's so very special, because so many lives have been lost for us to have our freedoms. Thank you.
I'm telling you guys, you have to come next year, you'll never experience anything like it. Have they honored the nurses? Yes, it's a big thing on the nurses this year.
Wonderful, thank you. Anyone else would like to fill out a green card and speak? Okay, well, that's fine. Ms. Crossen, please.
Okay, does anybody want to pull anything from consent agenda?
Six point two, six point two.
Six point two.
C. Do you vote on, I don't know how you do that, on one position?
Separate?
Vote on the one position separately? Can we do that?
Yes. Yeah.
So could we vote on the assistant principal position separately?
Yeah, you can pull up. You can. Yeah, I'm gonna, I'll pull six point, we'll do everything and then we'll come back to six point two C.
Okay. And six point, six point five, six point five B, I need to abstain.
Okay.
Six point five B.
I'm sorry, Mr. Martin. Could we vote on six point nine B separately?
Yep.
And?
Excuse me, was that six point nine D?
Six point nine B, as in Boy.
Boy, thank you.
Yep, and?
Dr. Batten, if I get sick with your coughing.
I could. Doctor Batten, Doctor Batten, you need to be home with some Vicks on you and some, some Tylenol. I can hear the fever over here.
And stay away from me, buddy boy.
Six point nine, six point nine E, could we just vote on that separately?
Yep.
And I'm sorry, that's it. Sorry, Mr. Martin.
Okay, so after, I'm gonna read them all, then we're gonna vote on six point two C, six point five B, six point nine B, and six point nine E separate.
Now, may I just say something, Ms. Crossen? On the personnel, Dr. Batten will introduce Dr. Kelly to introduce the vice principal. So we can, after we do personnel, we can do it, or do it whatever way you want, I'm just saying that's.
It's the same one she wants to vote on individually, so it works out.
Yeah, so the six point two C, the authorization to employ, we'll do that separate, and then she can introduce, then he can introduce.
That sounds like plan.
Does anybody else want to have anything?
Okay. You're just asking on six, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Crossen, can I just mention, I would have to abstain from six point one A, because I wasn't here.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, you have that right.
I got it.
There's a big order there.
Got it, we're on it now. All right. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point one A approves the minutes from the October 10th, 2023 work session, regular school board meeting. Six point one B approves the minutes from the 2024, 2020, October 24th, 2023 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Six point two personnel, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point two A retirement, six point two B resignations, we're skipping over C, six point two D leave of absence, six point two E change of status, six point two F co-character additions, six point three exceptions to policy, none, six point four appointments, none. Six point five waivers, be it resolved that Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point five A approves retroactively the request for a 50% reduction of fees for Centennial Athletics Community Association to use the pool at William Tannet High School for practices and meets. The cost to Centennial Athletics Community Association is $6,325.0. Six point five B, this is gonna be voted on separate, but we're gonna read it, approves a request for a 50% reduction of fees for Warmister basketball to use the gym on Saturdays at McDonald Elementary, Willowdale Elementary, and Log College Middle, and on Saturdays and Sundays at William Tannet High School from December 2nd, 2023 through April 6th, 2024. The cost to Warmister basketball with the reduction of fees is $13,680.0. Six point six conferences and travels, none, six point seven bids and quotes, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point seven A approves the five-year renewal of the telephone service agreement with Xtel effective beginning July 1st, 2024, for the district desktop telephone service, district cost not to exceed $31,875.0 per year. Six point seven B approves the purchase of books from Bound to Stay Bound and Follett for Davis Elementary School Library, district cost not to exceed $2,698.12. Six point eight, assembly speakers and programs, none, six point nine contracts, license, and services, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point nine A approves the renewal of the contract with Humanus Corporation for staffing of paraprofessionals when needed. Rates are included in the attached. Skipping B, six point nine C approves renewal of the 2023, 2024 Special Education Curriculum Smarts through the Research Institute for Learning and Development, district cost not to exceed $7,182.0. Six point nine D approves retroactively the tuition agreement for E S Y service at Fairwood Academy for two students from July 5th through August 10th, 2023. District cost for tuition is $12,540 plus any related services as required by the IEPs. Skipping over six point nine E. Six point nine F approves retroactively the Martin Luther School Extended Service Year E S Y contract for three students to receive E S Y services from July 10th through August 11th, 2023. Cost to the district for E S Y tuition is $5,800 per student plus any related services as required by the students' IEP. Six point nine G approves Change Order One to the contract with Siemens Desago Installation at the Administration Building for the Heating, Ventilation, and Air Conditioning System to address issues uncovered with the furnace, district cost not to exceed $9,965.0. Six point ten textbooks, none, six point eleven acceptance of donation grants and bequests, be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, six point one, six point one one accepts a donation from the William Tannet Alumni Association in the amount of $3,000 for the digitalization of yearbooks, that, that did not happen.
We just didn't do the presentation, you have the money.
Okay, so let's move forward with that, taking the money. Six point one one B accepts the Ready to Learn Grant in the amount of $380,367.0. Grant fund will be used to support digital literacy classes in grades four to 12 and to provide a K to 12 instructional coach for science and technology. Six point twelve, change academics programs, positions, and stipends, none.
Good girl.
Can I get a second? Second. Okay, so we are going to do an all in favor, except for six point one A, six point two C, six point five B, six point nine B, six point nine E. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any nays or abstentions? Okay, so now we're gonna go to six point one A, approves the minutes from the October 10th work session, regular school board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
Yes.
Okay, and any nays? So that's gonna pass with one abstention, one abstention. All right, six point two C, authorization to employ. So can we, did you want to talk about this first before we?
Nope. I don't want to talk about it. I just wanna, I just want to vote on it separate.
Okay, so all in favor for six point two C, authorization to employ?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions?
I'm gonna abstain.
And any nays? Okay.
Madam Chair, before we move on, I'd like to take this opportunity to ask Dr. Kelly to come to the mic, and Ms. Rendon, in consistent with our practice for now that's so eloquently suggested by Mr. Golderson. If, Dr. Kelly, you come up? And Ms. Rendon, is she here? Ms. Rendon went through three rounds of selection process. Each round included representation from teachers, staff, administration, and then the final round was solely with myself and the Chief Human Resource Officer, as outlined by policy. A minimum of two names has to come to me. I ask for three whenever possible, because I'm also supposed to have a backup, should the board ever reject the initial candidate. Ms. Rendon has a pretty impressive history, and it's coming from us, from Radnor at this current time, I believe. So, Dr. Kelly, would you like to share, so the board can ask any questions, or welcome the new person? They are replacing Dan Julius, if you recall, who's retiring this December, I believe, Dr. Batten?
Yes, sir. Greetings, Dr. Batten, Madam President, and the Centennial School Board. Upon receiving notice of the retirement of Mr. Julius Assistant Principal at Willowdale Elementary, I, along with members of Central Office, Willowdale Teachers and Parents, and our C E A President, conducted a very thorough interview process of qualified candidates from around the Commonwealth. After a tense, three-round process, we are happy to announce that Mrs. Janice Rendon has been selected as the most qualified applicant and candidate to become the new Assistant Principal of Willowdale Elementary. Thank you all for your consideration on voting for her. We are super happy to have her skill set accompany me and just become a service to the Willowdale community, and so I want to formally introduce Mrs. Janice Rendon. Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having me, and it's an honor to be here.
Would you like to come up and meet the board members before you are finished?
Surely, absolutely.
Well, when I say finished, I don't mean eliminated.
You're voting me off the island already?
Maybe my choice of words wasn't the best. Would you be so kind to introduce yourself to the board members? That's better English.
Should I make rounds or?
Yes, please, thank you. Dr. Kelly, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not gonna stand up. How are you?
I'm very well.
Good. Honey, how are you?
Okay, Ms. Crossen? All right, we voted on that authorization to employ, right? Yeah, so now we're moving on to?
Six point five B.
Yeah, six point five B approves, we already read it, approves a request for a 50% reduction of fees for Warmister basketball to use the gym on Saturdays at McDonald Elementary, Willowdale Elementary, and Log College Middle, and on Saturday and Sundays at William Tannet High School from December 2nd, 2023 through April 6th, 2024. The cost to Warmister basketball with the reduction of fees is $13,000, $13,680.0. All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
Abstaining.
And any nays? Okay, motion passes with one abstention. Then we're gonna move down to six point nine B. Approves retroactively the renewal, the renewal tuition contract with New Hope Academy for student 10-8 for the 2023, 2024 school year, district cost not to exceed $40,900.0.
I'm sorry, which one is this?
Six point nine B.
Six point, okay.
Did you want to just, do you want to discuss it or just vote separate?
No, I didn't want to talk about it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
I'm abstaining.
Any nays? Okay, motion passes, one abstention. Six point nine E approves retroactively the program placement agreement for services with Bucks Learning Academy for the 2023, 2024 school year. The daily tuition rate is $166 per student.
I didn't really need it off, I wrote the wrong letter, but after you already went through that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays?
That kind of night, I'll tell you.
Motion passes. Okay.
Wonderful, thank you.
All right, so now we're gonna go to New Business. Does anybody want to pull anything from New Business?
Only one thing.
Only one thing there. Okay. Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors approves the continuation of the school nurse coordinator position and stipend for the 2023, 2024 school year. The stipend amount is $4,000 as per the attached. Can I just? All in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Any nays? Motion passes.
Madam President, Ms. Preston's sitting in front there, for those who.
All right, on policies.
Okay. Policy, Ms. Allenberg, please. Ms. Crossen, thank you very much.
Policies presented for initial distribution and discussion. Eight point one A, policy 218, student discipline. Eight point one B, policy 340, responsibility for student welfare. Eight point two, policies presented for adoptions. Does anyone wish to pull anything from?
I would like to vote on separately, eight point two A. I'm sorry. Eight point two, shoot, eight point two D, and that's it. Just vote on them separately. That's all I wanted.
Okay.
Be it resolved that the Centennial School Board, School District Board of School Directors, eight point two B, policy 206, assigned within district. Eight point two C, policy 216.1, supplemental discipline records. Eight point two E, policy 830, security of computerized personnel information, breach notification, and eight point two F, policy 30.1, data governance, storage, and security. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Be it resolved that the Centennial School District Board of School Directors, eight point two A, policy 008, organization. You have a question?
No, I don't have a question, I just wanted to vote on them separately.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstaining?
I'm a nay.
No. Passes eight, one, zero. Eight point two D, policy 312, evaluation of superintendent.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining, no's?
Hold on one second. Eight point two D. That's what you get when you write things down too fast. Eight point two D, evaluation. I wanted to abstain. I just had a question, and I'm gonna have to figure it out, but I saw, I have to abstain.
Okay, thank you, that's all. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Allenberg, thank you. Financials, Mr. Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. There were four items this evening. Does anyone have any desire to pull or have additional questions, any of the four? Apparently not. Be it resolved, Centennial Board of School Directors approves nine point one, the schedule of bills, investments, cafeteria fund budget reports, and general fund cash receipt summary October of 2023 as per the attached. Nine point two, approves the 2023 budget transfers for October that were attached. Nine point three, approves the pending bills list as the attached, and nine point four, accepts the pre-approved bills list, also attached. I will make a motion for approval.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, done.
Mr. Martin, you really go through that financial fast?
Nobody questions it.
No, because it's you, that's why. Item 10, board discussion and comments. Any members have any discussion or comments?
I have a question, Madam President.
Mr. Martin, please.
I'm just thinking back over the meetings we had during the year. I recall a meeting, I believe, Madam President, it was in early April.
Yes.
And the Warmister State Representative appeared at that meeting, Mr. Monroe. I believe one of the purposes of his coming here was to announce a grant to the school district of, I forget, it was $25,000 or $30,000.
Thirty.
To go to, I believe, some of the food programs at Klinger School. My question is, I never heard anything beyond that, did in fact the school district ever receive such grant?
To my knowledge, no. Mr. Greenwood? I know what you're gonna say, but it's no.
I have not, but we'll follow up with him.
Appreciate that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, anyone else?
No problem. I'm on this side, it's okay. Three items. One, on October 28th, high school student Savannah Zeman held her 10th Annual Savannah's Lemonade Stand to raise money for chop cancer research. This year's effort raised about $6,000, so a remarkable decade for a good cause, inspired by the passing of her kindergarten teacher. And I'm fortunate to work with Savannah as part of the C E F Board, where she's the senior student rep, so just awesome job to Savannah, her family and friends who helped out, and of course, everyone who donated and supported the effort this year. Second, I wanted to give a well-deserved shout-out to Mrs. McCaffery, Mrs. Hoban, and the students of the William Tannet Drama Club for their hard work on this year's fall play, the Greek Mythology Olympia Ganza. I hope you had a chance to see it, I saw it twice, because I'm Prometheus's father. But it was a truly funny and impressive show that the students and dramatics directors managed to put together in just seven weeks, so they did a remarkable job. And tryouts are underway this week for the Spring Musical, Hello, Dolly, so I'm excited to see that one come together. Dolly, so I'm excited to see that one come together as well. And finally, a shout out to the principals, our teacher and our club director, Mrs. Varian, artist, Mrs. Kelly, and building supervisor, Mr. Berg, district carpenter, Mr. Gleason, and all the students who worked for over a year to make possible the beautiful new mural that covers the wall when you first enter Klinger Middle School. It's absolutely gorgeous, it's colorful and joyful and sets just a bright and energetic tone when you walk into the building, I hope you have a chance to see it, and you don't have to look far because you can see it as you walk up the pathway toward the front doors, you don't even have to be inside the building, so it's very nice, and I was glad to stop by for the unveiling on the 8th, so great work for everyone, that's all.
Mrs. Shidowsky, your enthusiasm in your reports is overwhelming.
I'm very excited, awesome things to report.
That's wonderful, thank you. Next item is reports, district policy report, Ms. Allenberg, please.
I want to say I was unable to attend the last one, if Mrs. Rouge or Mr. Ginnhart wish to, if they have anything to say.
Okay.
We presented, we presented what was discussed for approval tonight and for discussion.
All right, how about the Bucks County Intermediate Unit?
As always, the Bucks County Intermediate Unit is looking to hire, there's lots of positions available, please check them out on their Facebook page, on their website. They opened a new early learning center on the campus of Lower Bucks Hospital in Bristol on August 28th. The E L C proudly serves children and families in the Bucks County I U's federally funded Head Start Program, and in the Bucks I U's state-funded preschool early intervention program, both programs are available at no cost to students, this is a great addition to the community, and I will stop there because there's a lot more, you can check it out on their website under Awesome News. Thank you.
All right, thank you. P S B A Representative, Mr. Shidowsky.
Thank you. P S B A dot org is where you can find information on virtual and in-person training for new school directors and a new advanced school director training for any of us looking to advance. Dates and locations can be found there as well, don't be surprised if you hear me mention that again next month. There's also a free webinar on the 28th at noon on understanding challenges and identifying supports in cybersecurity, certainly an important topic that we've touched on here before a couple times, but another opportunity for anyone who would like to learn and join a conversation two weeks from today.
Thank you. And guess what?
Hmm?
You're on again, Centennial Education.
Didn't even turn my mic off.
Nation liaison.
Thank you. Actually, no major news to report, last month's meeting, the murder mystery fundraiser was the major topic of discussion, we're headed for the close of the year, and planning is well underway for 2024, I can say that the new executive director, Jennifer Schultz, has expressed interest in joining us for a future board meeting just to introduce herself to the board officially and speak on behalf of C E F, so connect you to later and hopefully she can join us for a future meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Allenberg, Legislative Council Liaison, please.
I want to, I want to preface this, the way the B C I U meetings occur are three weeks prior to these reports being.
Oh, okay.
So, a lot of what is in this report has passed and it's no longer relevant, but what I will say is that there are sessions scheduled for Senate and House for November and December, tomorrow for Senate, December 11th, 12th, and 13th for Senate, and then for House, November 15th, tomorrow, December 11th, 12th, and 13th. There also was discussion about moving the primary this year to March, it looks like they will be going with April 23rd, 2024 for the primary date, we are still waiting for confirmation, but it's looking like that's what it will be. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Middle Bucks Institute of Technology Executive Council President, Mr. Goddison, please.
Thank you. Well, first I want to just mention that the student that spoke earlier tonight did a fantastic job reflecting all that's happening at M B I T, but a couple of things that is on the agenda, we are looking to expand our welding program, so we're looking at the cost of renovating or changing one of the classrooms to a new welding facility. This would allow us to add another 32 welding students into the program. The only other thing that's important to recognize is that we do have that open house on December 6th, it is very well attended, you know, there could be as many as 1,000 students, so parking is at a premium if you're coming late. Lastly, we are changing our meeting dates at M B I T, that will now occur on the first Tuesday of the month and the fourth Monday, voting will take place on the first Tuesday, and the meeting of whole will take place on the fourth Monday. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Just to add on to that, basically, if your child goes to M B I T while they're in high school, and I say to you, encourage them, because after they graduate high school, William Tannett, they go to a trade school, you're talking $25,000 a year, couple years, it adds up, so if your student knows what they want to do and they think they want to do something in trade school, mommy and daddy, you're gonna save a lot of money, because these trade schools, I know because my grand, two grandsons went to trade schools, and it is expensive, more so than you think, although they end up making very good salaries. I just wanted to add that.
Many of the students that leave and graduate from M B I T are already certified and qualified to go out into industry and would make a lot more money than just the 24, 25,000.
Oh, I know that. Hey, thank you very much. Communication, I think we've communicated, I don't believe we have any more communication. Are there any more additional public comments? Okay, thank you. Schedule of board meetings, Mr. Goddison, please.
I'll be. Forward them to Mrs. Allenberg.
Yeah, I'll be taking over for Mr. Attickson.
Okay, whoever.
Scheduled board meetings and calendar events, Monday, November 20th, early dismissal, K through five, grading day, Tuesday, November 21st, early dismissal, K through five conferences, Tuesday, November 21st, B C I U board meeting at B C I U, Wednesday, November 22nd, all schools closed, K through 12 conferences, Thursday and Friday, November 23rd and 24th, all schools are closed for holiday. Tuesday, November 28th, 7:00 p.m., Centennial School Board Meeting Committee of the Whole here in this boardroom, Monday, December 4th, 7:00 p.m., Centennial School Board Meeting Reorg Meeting right here in this boardroom, Monday, December 11th, 5:30 p.m., M B I T Executive Council at M B I T, and Tuesday, December 12th, 7:00 p.m., Centennial School Board Meeting, regular meeting here in the boardroom, and there are no Committee of the Whole School Board Meetings in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we adjourn, may everyone have a very happy Thanksgiving. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And thank you.